Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paula, and welcome, everyone. It's Tuesday, July 21, 2020. That's just after 5:00 PM. This is the city of Cottonwood Heights. It's our work session for our second meeting of July. We actually have three meetings tonight. Following our work session, we have a CDA, CDRA, a meeting at 6:30, followed by our business meeting at 7:00. So referring to your agenda, the first item is to review our business meeting agenda. And everyone's information, we will first read a letter determination that gives us the authority to hold our meetings via over the Internet. With our, we'll do our pledge. And then with citizen comments, we're making an adjustment, trying to improve some things. So we will, we've communicated with our constituents that if they want to make public comments, they were to register by 5:00 PM with Paula, and they'll be invited to join our meeting. We had a couple people who submitted written comments. Tim has communicated back with all of those individuals to register to speak through the Zoom process. But either way, we'll send you copies of their written comments. And Tim will introduce that a little bit later. So we're trying to be as sensitive we can to our constituents where they can give us their verbal feedback.
Mayor, just one note on that. The registering and getting into the webinar, they can do that up until we close the citizen comment. So it isn't prior to 5:00 that they had to be registered.
Okay, it says prior to 5:00 on the agenda. That's why I said that.
I thought it says citizen comments, or did it? That's just the citizen comments if they want to do it in writing?
Oh, maybe that's what it is. You're right. My bad. Thank you. Yeah. With that being said, we have two action items. The first is a resolution entering into written agreement in local funding agreement with Salt Lake County for $500,000 for the purchase of the 26-point some acres on Wasatch Boulevard. Tim, any introduction with respect to that agreement? Or Shane?
No, it's just the agreement. It's them committing $500,000 for that acquisition. It goes along with the million that the city council is committed to that project. We do, the agreement does specify that we have to spend, or the property has to be purchased by December 1st of this this year, or the funding needs to be dispersed back to the county. That's, that's the main requirement with the agreement. We're recommending approval of it.
Yeah, I read that. Same thing. That'd be the one comment I would make is that timeframe. I think it says if it's not spent by December 1st, we have till the end of the year to return the money. But hopefully, we will make that happen. The second action item is resolution approving appointments to our Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. We have two individuals who are being appointed. So Mike Johnson or Tim, are you going to tell us a little bit about those individuals? I know the resumes were submitted in the packet, and both impressive individuals.
Yep. Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead.
Sure. Tim and I interviewed three candidates, the two we, that Tim's recommended. One represents District 2, which was in need of representation, additional representation on the committee. The other represents District 3. Chris Owens is the individual from District 2, and Paula McFarland is from District 3. With these two appointments, we pretty evenly balance out representation across all four council districts. So I think we, they're very well qualified. You know, either in their day jobs or in their volunteer interests to serve on this committee, and we think there'll be good additions.
Yeah, I think it's of note, if you read the resumes, that Chris's voluntary efforts of Albany area, primarily of trails. I don't know either one. And Paula McFarland was just a lot of experience just working with committees and public service of a variety of kinds, including big sisters, big brothers, and other things like that. So we'd like to be a good fit. And again, it's for the council's consideration. Any question on the business meeting? Also, just an FYI on the citizen comments. As of about 45 minutes ago, we had probably 15 or 20 people register to be online. So plan on probably at least an hour of public comments. And I'll remind everyone to be have decorum and be sensitive and to the three-minute limits. But hopefully, that'll go through, first time we're doing it online.
Okay. Sorry, Christine.
Go ahead, Christine. Yeah.
I just asked Tim this in a text, but I don't know. It's hard. I'm sure to answer my text. But so we're just moving towards all public comments. People have to dial in. We're not taking written comments anymore. It's just, you have to sign up and speak to us. And then
Go ahead.
If that's a yes, then my next comment is, will you be making the speech that you made? I think, oh, I think there was a period of time where some of the public comments had a bit of vitriol and other maybe not as respectful as they have been in the past. Or are you going to make a comment to that, to that end, that we this is a respectful space?
And yeah, I think, I think that was my intent. And that's what I was hitting towards. And you know, our speaker comment card that we have in our meetings here at City Hall talks about order and decorum and being respectful of everyone, including the council and those who are speaking. So I'll definitely reference that and try and keep that to focus and talk about the issues, not make things personal. Yep.
And Mayor, may I just clarify, on the first part of your question, Councilmember Michael, that we are accepting written comments. They'll be admitted into the record. We'll be forwarding them, forwarding them to the city council. So they'll be part of the record. They're just not being read like, like we have in the past.
I wonder if we could add that to an agenda topic item. I just, I feel like if people have comments to make, they should be able to do it, looking at a side eye, whether it's Zoom or in a public forum. I know there's exceptions to that, but I, I don't know. I struggle with, I struggle with the written comments a bit, even as part of the record. Can you help me understand? Is that, we always done that, or is this just a change?
Yeah, we've always done it. When we receive written comments, we forwarded, we've admitted those into the record and forwarded them to the council. So that, that's something that, that people can provide those written comments. We are, we are not reading them tonight. That's the difference from the other meetings in the past few months. But we have always taken written comments and just forwarded them or admitting them into the record and forwarded them to the council.
But I think we've done that when the written comment states they want to be on the record for the council meeting. It's my understanding, historically, you know, we've usually gotten maybe one periodically before the pandemic. And I think a couple times, I remember actually reading those into the record because they requested. But what happened last meeting was spending over two hours, I think we all discussed, and let me know if we disagreed, because it's up to the council how they want to do it. And we felt that that was maybe not the most effective way to do it. So we communicated on our agenda that we would make a change this meeting, and they could register, which, again, I mentioned, like 15 or 20 have already registered. Those who have made written comments and asked that they be read, I think it was like a half dozen or less. My understanding, Tim has communicated with each of those individuals and let them know that their names will be read into the record, but the comments will be forwarded to the council. So to me, the important thing to use accounts will have those comments, and they'll be shared with you. We won't read them all. And the individuals know they will not be read in. That makes sense. And if we'd like to change it going forward, we can talk more about it later, or okay? Any further questions on that issue for now? But let us know what you think later. All right. Going back to the business meeting, I'm required to read the determination that gives us the authority to hold this meeting via Zoom, I guess. Shane, any introduction to that, or I just go ahead and read it?
Yes, just, just go ahead and read, read it. That's fine.
Yeah. I'll be reading it twice for both meetings. So it's determination of the Chair of the City Council and of the Board Concerning an Anchor Location, says pursuant to Utah Code Annotated 52-4207 for the city's mayor as a Chair of the City Council and of the Board of the Cottonwood Heights Community. Well, we even were all one. Is there a different one, Shane, for?
I have just done one, combined, one, it'll have to be read at the beginning of all three meetings. So it's a combination one for you as a mayor of the city and Chair of the
Yeah, refers to the CDRA, so I had to make sure. I'm sorry. Appreciate everybody's patience. We'll go through this again. So pursuant to Utah Code Annotated 52-4207 for the city's mayor as a Chair of the City Council of the Board of Cottonwood Heights Community Development Renewal Agency hereby determines that conducting the meeting on this date of the City Council and of the Board at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. The World Health Organization, the President of the United States, the Governor of Utah, Salt Lake County Mayor, and Health Department have all recognized that a global pandemic exists related to new strain of the coronavirus SARS-COVID-2. Therefore, due to the date, the state of the emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. According to information from state, the epidemiology expert Utah is currently in an acceleration phase, which has a potential to overwhelm the state's healthcare system. So that's our determination, and that gives us the authority then to hold this meeting via the Internet. Okay. All right. Coming back to the business meeting. I should say to the work session. Shane, I think I probably didn't need to read that for the work session.
Here, the statute says it has to be read at the beginning of every meeting. And so I think the conservative approach is to view every, every segment of the meeting as a separate one. Certainly, this work session and the and the CDRA meeting, and I think it probably would be just as well to read at the beginning of the business meeting, even though we've read it once.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's patience. Okay, we're going to move ahead to staff reports. And we have about an hour and 10 minutes. So we don't have a ton of time, but we'll do what we can. So I'm going to turn it over to Tim Tingey to introduce police policies and training discussion before turning it over to Robbie and Dan to talk about training, use of force policies, messaging, and the Utah League of Cities and Towns Police Task Force. And let me preface this discussion. Hopefully, everyone understands, this is not one meeting to determine our position on all topics. This is the beginning of what I assume will be several meetings, several discussions, feedback from the trust, from the state, and others that we may want to involve in the discussion later. This is the introduction of that discussion. And Tim, you may want to set a couple of ground rules, and I'll add to those if necessary. But whatever, to understand that time is limited, but we want everyone to be heard. Everyone to have an opportunity to share their concerns or questions, and it may be a few meetings over time. Okay, Tim, go ahead.
Okay, I'll just be brief introducing this. You know, I've shared with the council over the past few weeks, I've had the opportunity to sit down with almost all of the police officers for Cottonwood Heights. Appreciated these meetings with each of them. For the most part, our officers have really struggled with the perceptions of police prompted by the terrible incident in Minneapolis. Several of them really expressed frustration to me that their reputation as officers is tainted by a senseless act that resulted in the loss of of lives across the world. At times, some of the officers became emotional when talking about these matters. It's been, it's been a difficult time. Our officers, as you know, they have a difficult job. Every single day, they face challenges, and it's not the, not just the potential of contentious situations, but also they oftentimes see heart-wrenching circumstances. It's very difficult. So we really welcome this opportunity to present information about our policies, our training, our practices, and other relevant information to talk through at this point. There's, there's many good things that have come out with our, from our residents with our scientific survey that we did in the fall. There are, the majority of the residents feel safe and are satisfied with the work of the police, but there's always areas that, that we need to improve in any department, any organization. And that's something that we'll talk about what we do tonight and things that we can work towards. Just, just one other thing related to the statewide discussion on law enforcement. It is a very, very extensive process. I've been in contact with the league talking about the process that they're going to go through. It's called Love, Listen, and Lead. And it's starting out with the Multicultural Affairs, Affairs Committee of the state, providing input, and they're identifying a multitude up to up to around 20 areas of discussion points. Then they're going to do an extensive data push related to this, meaning focus groups with a number of different groups and a number of different individuals. They're going to do a statewide survey, and they have a task force that's together that includes about 23 individuals, 10 of them being elected officials, six of them being police chiefs, three city managers, four city attorneys. And that task force is really going to come forward with a number of different things that will probably interact with the state legislature as well, related to all of this. So we're, we're going to be watching this closely. I'm going to be involved in in the meetings and the data point and our police chief as well as others. And there's a lot that's going to come from that that's probably going to prompt some of the discussion points that we have in the future. So that being said, I'm going to turn the time over to, to Dan, or to Lieutenant Bartlett and Chief Russo, and we can go from there. Sorry.
Okay, Christine, first, go ahead.
Sorry, I had a question. Tim, can you remind, I didn't write down fast enough. Who's on that, that board? You said four city managers. Can you just repeat that again?
Yeah, there's 10 elected officials, includes a combination of mayors and city council members. There are six police chiefs. This is throughout the state. There are three city managers and four city attorneys. That's the makeup. 23 individuals are on that.
I guess a follow-up to that. I, I guess I'm always, when we have these boards, it seems like in the state, sometimes it doesn't feel like the entire body is represented. Is that, it seems like there's a, if you look at a pizza pie, maybe 75% of those people who should be on the border on it, it seems like there's 25% or maybe 10% of those that are not on it. I mean, consumer advocates or something like that. I just wondered, who determined the makeup of that board? And is there an opportunity to have input on others? Because it just, it just seems like there could be a couple other perspectives. That might be helpful.
I think we can share that with the league. It was the league board that determined who is on the, on this committee. I asked, it is set right now. That doesn't mean that we can't provide input and see if they'll add more, but I don't, I don't know the answer to that, if they would add more or not.
Yeah, I was, I was personally more than willing to participate as well as Tim was, but I think, to be frank with the council, because of some things going on in our city, I think there's some hesitation to put us on that board, though we're invited to participate in all the discussions. Again, I think it's not anything that mandates how we respond to our own needs and concerns. It's just one more tool in the toolbox that we can use to evaluate our positions, along with what the legislature does and what we find from our own analysis and determination as far as best practices. There's one more tool. Yeah, it's nothing that we're required to follow, but I think that, I think there's some reputable people there, and hopefully, if they, if we look at the process they use, we can evaluate it and see what data that it gives us, and we can determine if we want to use it. Yeah. And Tim will be involved. Tim talked to them today, and will be involved through the whole thing, but just not as an official member.
So Mayor, on this, on the presentation that we're going to have, there are a number of things that we'll go through, and maybe some of your questions will be answered as we go through it. So we'll give the presentation, and if it's okay, we can go into the discussion and questions at that point, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I think we'll allow you to do the presentation first, and if everybody can take notes and hold some questions, and then everyone will have all the time they need to respond to the presentation. So Dan or Robbie, who's first?
I'm going to have Dan start pulling it up. I assume he knows how to do that. Yeah, looks like he does. And I'm going to preface it by, as we go through this, Mary, you're right. This isn't, you know, a single discussion. This isn't something that we do, you know, as a one-time dealer in a vacuum. Good policy and policing is a living, breathing sort of document, and it changes as we go throughout history and as times change and resources change and techniques change. So what you're about to see are policies and procedures that have been in effect, that have grown, that have recently been imposed. But it's a culmination of experiences and best practices and law over a long period of time. So with that said, go ahead and pull it up, Dan, and then we'll get started.
I just wanted to say briefly before I pulled this presentation up, we are, we are keenly aware of what the narrative is across this nation, across the world, really, of policing and and the things that go into policing and the issues of race and things like that. And as growing up in this country as a black man, I am aware of the stuff that has gone on, and I am always watching for it in our police department. I don't believe that's an issue that we have. I don't believe it's an issue we're going to have. I think that we are, we're, we always have this on our mind. We are always looking to make things better. So with that, I will pull this presentation up for you guys. Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Okay. Some of the topics that we are going to discuss today, our overall training requirements, our use of force, our use of force policy, de-escalation, the hashtag eight current policies, reporting and review of use of force, bias training, qualified immunity, and our solve the problem motto. Philosophy of the Police Department, the training is, we seek to provide ongoing training and encourage all of our personnel to participate in advanced training and formal education on a continual basis. The training we provide the required amount of training for our police officers for their certification, as well as go above and beyond what is required. Every year, we seek out training for them. We try to provide them with the best training we can possible. We look to to multiple places for that training, and we try to make sure that our guys are trained up. In fact, we take pride on it, in it. The state of Utah, the post requirements are, it posted, the academy itself is about 480 hours of training that they go to, to get through the academy. The post requires 40 hours of EVO, Emergency Vehicle Operation Training, within the first year of them graduating the academy. That's something that we get them through. The post requires 40 hours of annual training a year, and I'll kind of go through what that 40-hour, what post asks for that 40 hours. And then, once we get a new officer out of post, our field training is about 640 hours, and that's them with another person in their car that trains them all day, every day for their 10-hour shift until they graduate from our FTO program. We at Cottonwood Heights, the chief has made it a requirement that all of our officers be CIT certified, which is crisis intervention techniques. And he would like all of them certified. Now, we are, we, most of our officers are certified. We're about 75%. Right now, we have some new ones that we're getting into school with funding and availability of schools, but we are, we are, it's always something we're working towards, working on, and we will have them all certified soon. We ensure that all
That kind, just quick, is that, is that a de-escalation type crisis intervention? Is that, that specifically, or is it broader than?
It's broader than just the, what de-escalation, the term de-escalation is, it goes into, so crisis intervention goes into a lot of mental health issues, those kind of things that, that guys can realize that they're dealing with, they're dealing with, might be a mental health crisis, and that they can get them the appropriate or what resources we have available to them.
Again, not, not, not to offend anyone, but let's hold our question, because I know if we get into some things, we can get off onto a lot of discussions. So take some notes, and we can come back to things.
Last year, fiscal year 2019, our officers averaged 134 hours of training. So that's across the department. A post-recommended train schedule, this is something that post asks for our guys to be, to do. So we have to make sure that they're certified in first aid and CPR and has not. We have to do that every couple of years. UFA does that for us. We have to do EVO, the Emergency Vehicle Operation, once every two years. We got to do handgun three times a year, rifle once a year, and a use of force simulator annually. Our arrest control, defensive tactics, we have to do annually. Botton, we have to do annually. Taser, we do annually. Sexual harassment is actually, it's a city thing, but we do that annually. We do sexual assault updates every couple of years. We have to, we have to certify on the toxilizer, that's the DUI, the machine, every three years, and radar and radar, we do every three years. And of course, when they have a CIT, a crisis intervention certification, they have to do four hours of continual mental health training every year to keep that certification. So we make sure that they have that as well. Just to give you an idea of what we've done over the last couple of years here at the Police Department, what you can see is this is a 60 hours of training that we provided here with them in class, in front of us at the office. This isn't done online. This is what we bring to the department that they do, sitting in our chairs here at the office. Just to go over, this is last year's training calendar, as you can see of what we did, and I'll kind of let you guys look through that. We, of course, we had de-escalation in that time, we had, which helped with our CIT officers needing their four-hour update. We did a tactical mental health through Salt Lake Behavioral, mental health first aid through Salt Lake County Mental Health. Of course, our less lethal, our annual less lethal OC, those things. The mental health first aid was a 10-hour course. We had to space it out between a couple of different training dates. And then our update to sexual how, or sexual assault with Salt Lake County and our handgun and different rifle simulator, use of force simulator and first aid. This last year, fiscal year 2020, same thing, we provided them 60 hours of in-class training, 20 hours above the 40-hour required minimum. And we, you know, of course, this last year, we did our rifle and our handgun. We had versa term was a big year for us, versa term. Our defensive tactics and arrest control, our handgun, we did some peer support, and we brought in James Mason Center for Youth, a youth facility for at-risk teens. We partnered with them. They came in and gave our officers some, some training on dealing with at-risk youth that, that's a little more specialized. They came in and we partnered with them, and it was, it was really useful for our guys. And of course, they are here and are located in our city, so we thought it was a great partnership. Then our use of force simulator handgun and emergency vehicle operations. Just to see who kind of gives us this training that we've gone over the last couple of years. Of course, we have our in-house trainers. A lot of our guys are certified to give training. So you'll see some of our guys' names in here, and then some of the people we brought in from the outside to give us some of this training that we've done. You know, of course, UFA, the, our legal updates with the Attorney General's Office, Salt Lake County DA. You know, of course, UFA, the, our legal updates with the Attorney General's Office, Salt Lake County DA, and our city prosecutor, a lot of Salt Lake Behavioral Health, primary children's and different partners that we've, we've kind of brought in to do training with us here in the department. Our SWAT training requirements. So we, like every other police department in the nation, are a part of the NTOA, which is National Tactical Officers Association, and they have some requirements of our SWAT people, which is what we get questioned about when, you know, when we go to court. Our SWAT team, team training requirements are, we have to have sixteen additional hours a month for those SWAT operators. They have to recertify every year in any discipline that they, that they have, whether that be breaching, any sort of breaching, our less lethal, our snipers, our guys that handle the gas, and, and of course, tactical use of force. We, we have to have test them in physical fitness, so they have a fit and a physical fitness requirement. And it must be regular and reoccurring and it must be in SWAT skills. So we train twice a month on top of our regular department training for SWAT. For our policy, our Commonwealth Heights Police Policy, we, we subscribe to Lexipol, which is a very large company that they take care of policy for eighty-one hundred participating agencies for public safety. They go through nine thousand legislative updates annually. They stay current on all case law and improve policies across the nation. They send us regular updates that, and they provide policy quizzes. They employ chiefs and prosecutors, defense attorneys, judges. They review all the policies, they review all the case law. It's, our policy is always changing. It's always updating and we stay up to date and current on our policy. It's a, it's a living document. And it's, it's, it is, it's huge if you've seen it. And it, it changes all the time and it's our responsibility to make sure that we get that policy out to the guys and that they're educated on the policy. So, which is why we have policy quizzes. Here's the, the hat, kind of hashtag eight things that have been brought up recently. The national narrative of what they would like to see police departments do. We wanted to kind of bring this in and show you what those kind of major topics are. Of course, there are chokeholds and strangleholds, de-escalation, warning shots, use of force continuum, exhausting all other means before shooting, duty to intervene, not shooting at moving vehicles, and comprehensive reporting. So keeping those in mind as I kind of go through these, these things, I, we just wanted to bring this up. So you guys are aware that we are aware of what, what's being asked. This is kind of some of the things that are de-escalation that we teach here in-house. And we sent a couple of officers to train the trainer. So we have a couple of our, it's actually sergeants, they're certified to give the, the training on de-escalation. And these are kind of some of the things that, that de-escalation covers with our, with our, with our officers. And this is something that we do, it'll be on every single year's training calendar. It's not, it's not something that's going to stop. It's not the flash in the pan training where we got it out of the way. It's something that we are, I've committed to, to be on our regular training agenda. And so I wanted to kind of throw this in so you guys can see what that is. Here at Commonwealth Heights, we do have a duty to intercede policy. Any officer present observing another officer using force that's clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances shall, when, when a position to do so, intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force. Any officer who observes another employee use force that exceeds the degree of force permitted by law should promptly report these observations to a supervisor. This is in our policy. It's something that we have. It's something that's observed. It's been in there for years. We just wanted to let you guys know that we, of course, have this and practice this. Our use of force policy on its own, officers shall only use the amount of force that is reasonably appears necessary, given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose. And that, of course, reasonableness judged from the perception of a reasonable percept. I'm sorry, I'm going too fast. From, it's a reasonable officer standpoint. Implicit bias in law enforcement. This is kind of a hot button topic that they would like implicit bias training for police officers. Now, we have been combing through the implicit bias trainings that are available. There are some national trainings that are, certifications that are available. There are some local level trainings that are available, all of which cost a lot of money. The term implicit bias in policing, it, it's, it really, there really hasn't been a national standard that, that they've come forward with, that they've asked us to do. And it kind of leaves it up to the individual departments to try to find an implicit bias training that would fit. This is kind of where we're at. I can, I can, I can implement one of the implicit bias trainings that we found. I found one locally that was twenty thousand dollars for them to come in and give an implicit bias training. I found one nationally that was five thousand dollars for them to come in and give us an implicit bias training. But it, it, there really hasn't been a standard. Now, I know that ULCT is trying to come up with a curriculum that they would like to do. They're working towards that. That's something that Tim's a part of. And we were going to kind of defer and wait to see if they came up with the training that would work, that we could implement. We have no problem implementing it. We will implement it as soon as you guys want. If you want to give me the money for training, I'll implement the ones that I found, no problem. If not, we can wait for the, the recommendation from the legislator and, and ULCT. A lot of the implicit bias training that is out there is currently co-mingle with the trainings that we already do. And, and, and so I feel like, you know, we, we're getting a lot of this information already out to our guys. And until we have something that they say is the standard, we're kind of, we're, 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 it just leaves it up to us to try to figure out what it is that we, that we think that we need. And again, I'm happy to, to implement an implicit bias training and I'll have it done within a month. If I can get the funds, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Our arrest control tactics, we currently in our policy do not have a karate control chokehold. It's not in our policy. It's not taught here. It's not taught in the academy. I have seventeen years on the job. I've never been taught the karate control chokehold. So it's not something that we, it's not an approved tactic. It's not something that we teach. It's not something that we do here, as well as kneeling on the neck or the head. That's not in our policy. It's not taught by Commonwealth Heights. It's not taught by post and it's not an approved technique. These are not things that we, that we do here. Any, in reporting the use of force, any force that's used shall be documented promptly. And we have a, a, a use of force template that they, the guys do in, in versa term. Anytime that they use force, they have to report it right away. And if there's any injuries, any visible injuries, any, any injuries that someone's complaining about outside of, you know, momentary discomfort, like these handcuffs hurt, which they do hurt, it requires a medical response. So we have to call fire and have them come be checked out. Shooting at or from moving vehicles, this is something we've had in policy for years and years and years. In fact, when Simko got into the DA's office, this was a hot kind of topic for him many, many years ago, a couple of terms ago. And this is something that has been in our, in our policy for a long time. That officers should move out of the path of an approaching vehicle instead of discharging their firearm. There was a time in law enforcement where if a car was driving at, at law enforcement, that they could shoot at the vehicle. This is the policy that the chief thought needed to be changed and he changed it a long time ago. We, of course, at Commonwealth Heights are part of the Officer Evolve Critical Incident Protocol, which if, if we have a critical incident, and we have had critical incidents here, the protocol is invoked. And no one from our department, if we're involved, is a part of that, part of that review. Of course, that's done by outside agencies and, and it's a multidisciplinary team, as you guys well know, that involves every other agency in the valley. And, and that, of course, is presented to District Attorney's Office where, you know, he makes his ruling on it. The, the separate investigative administrative investigation is done by us. That's an internal affairs review, whether we violated policy or not in that thing. And that's, that's done here in-house, but that's aside from the incident itself. It's its own independent review that is done here. And it's a policy review by us. Whether that, the action of the officer is deemed justified or not is, is done by the district attorney. And we do not, we don't rule on that at all. That's not done by us. Qualified immunity is another thing that's been talked about a lot. Qualified immunity, of course, you have to qualify for the immunity. Any officer that acts outside the law or, or any clearly established law or that they should have known as a law is not immune from, from answering for that. The officers have to act. They have to act within policy. They have to act within the law to, to get that qualified immunity. The Supreme Court recently ruled that the obvious function of the qualified immunity rule is to excuse an officer who makes a reasonable mistake in the exercise of, of his official duties. This is a, it's a, it's something that's regularly reviewed by the Supreme Court. It's poured over a case after case after case. And these are kind of rulings that they do. It's, it's something that helps keep government out of frivolous lawsuits when people act with good faith. It's something that, that you guys as elected officials enjoy as well. I am going to defer and let the chief talk about his solve the problem motto.
We built the police department. We wanted to build it around a small, three or four word mantra that kind of reflected what, what drives us, what motivates us, what, what our objectives are and what our policies are, the kind of service that we chose to survive or provide. And we chose solve the problem because it means to, it means so many things. But it doesn't just, it's confusing, but it doesn't just mean one thing. The guys are briefed on, on the concept of solving a problem. Oftentimes, we get called to the same house over and over and over again and without resolution. So it's solving the issue, using resources from the community and giving the care, so we don't have to keep responding to the same, or put a Band-Aid on, on a rigoring problem. So we also are not like other agencies. I keep hearing the protect and serve motto, but we don't act like other agencies. We do things better than other agencies. You'll find the policies and the training that Dan just described are far better, far exceed most or any other agency in the valley statewide or nationwide. And I listed some, for instances, but I could go on with pages and pages of, of what solve the problem means. So if you live in another jurisdiction and, and your car gets broken into, most officers can come, they can do a quick report, if they come at all. Very often, they'll do it by phone. Many agencies just have you report it on the computer and you don't get that face-to-face interaction with an officer. You don't get the care. And for very many, for, for people who've had their car window smashed and their belongings taken, that, that's a big deal to them. And that might be the biggest deal that's, that's happened to them in a very long time. So we don't just give case numbers and say, call your insurance company. We physically respond. We try to extract any evidence at the scene. We track down their property. We can give you instances, several instances of where we've recovered people's property that might not have had a lot of value, but it was important to the person to get it back, either intrinsically, sentimentally. But it was important for them to have their property back and someone responsible in custody. So we treat every case like it's an important case. I had an uncle who was driving down the street. He was, you know, eighty years old. He had this act. He was so proud of it, bought it new. And he used to show it to me all the time and drive it so carefully and bring it over every Sunday for lunch, for dinner. And I got rear-ended in another municipality. And the cops finally came, wrote a quick report and sent them on their way. And I guess that is serve and protect, but that doesn't solve the problem. You see, the driver of the car had a great history of substance abuse and, and pill abuse. In fact, we had arrested that person several times in our city for DUI involving controlled substances. So it's not just giving a report number and taking an accident report. See, he needed someone to hold that person, that other driver accountable. He deserved that, this level of service. And that's what we give. That's what solve the problem means. We've gone to suicides. This is not one time. Oh, let me tell you a story. This is stuff we do all the time. I can tell you, one specifically, we went to and I happened to be out and I, I went to the house because I recognized the name of the family. In fact, that family happened to be, that was there, happened to be related to a council member from Commonwealth Heights. And a person committed suicide that they knew. And we handled the, the case, removed the body. But the guys took some extra time and they went to the store. They went to the grocery store and they bought Clorox and towels and different things. And they removed the blood, groceries, you know, bone chips from the, from, from the sheetrock. Asked them why, why they, why they did that. And they said, because we just couldn't leave it. We couldn't just leave it for them to deal with or to find. Now, there are companies who do that, but there are other, there are not other police departments to do that. You see, they, we had to solve the problem for that, that family. And so we, we didn't just take the body, do the report and call it good. We don't have people who get killed from DUIs in the city. We just don't. You see nationally and statewide, the body count going up again this year. Well, I haven't checked lately. It might be down because of COVID. But the arrival live campaigns are because we get a lot of people who get killed by impaired drivers. We just actually don't have that problem in Commonwealth Heights. We used to keep track of it, had a running total of how many thousands of days it had been before we had anybody killed from a DUI driver. That's because we care and we solve that problem before it becomes a bigger problem, before it becomes a homicide. So we get the DUIs. And I get criticized for that sometimes, but I'll take that criticism because it's important to me to solve that problem. Much more important, or I can take the criticism all day long. What I can't take is going to the door and knocking on the door and telling some family member that the person they care and love about won't be coming home because of a careless DUI driver. Just even the simplest of tasks, I know a couple of you have commented when you've driven by or citizens have commented, they come in to the council meeting and said, you know, I drove by and I saw one of the police officers shoveling a driveway or ADA ramp. And you just don't get that kind of service somewhere else. That's not just serve and protect. Serve and protect is you take the calls that come in and, and handle them. Solve the problem is you see that something exists and it doesn't mean that we're heavy-handed. It doesn't mean that we use a hammer on every nail and everything's a nail. It means we see an issue and we'll react to it. We interact with our community and we're really good about this. We, we tend, this year it's kind of different because of COVID, but we tend to all these neighborhood and church functions where we can co-mingle, interact with the, with the citizens that we serve, get to know them, have them know us, have them know me and can call me personally and get to know the officers personally. And that doesn't change. Now, there are some agencies around here who have other mantras on the side of their car. But every time you see them, they're a different. But every time you see them, there are different officers that serve that community because they don't get a pick who they are and they don't get to train them and they don't get to make sure that they adopt the philosophies of that community. Here we do. We recently, and I'll I'll quit talking about it because I think you get the picture. There was a complaint up in in District Four of a a young man and they said he dressed like Jesus and was out yelling at cars, and he was. And it was, I I get it. I guess it wasn't surprising, but we 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 had several complaints of that person. A lot of people were critical of the police department because they thought, why do they let him do that? Why do they let that go on? Why do they let him stay up here? But instead of just doing the policing model of that case, what our officers did was go find mental health agencies. They they were able to put him into a program. And you know what? I don't know, have we even seen him since, Dan? So we, you know, on 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 situations like that, I found that if you can use the resources and spend the extra time, get them medicated, find them, you know, some sort of, well, living conditions or less about a place to live, interact with the family so they know what to do and who to call and provide them resources. They come off the police radar and then we never have to deal with it again. And that that is solve the problem. So with that, we'll go to the next slide.
So that, that's it, I just want to put that for together for you guys. And I'll, I will of course send that out to you so you guys can all see it. And I'm happy to take questions and and answer whatever questions you have of us, of the of the presentation.
Okay, first of all, you know, thank you, Robbie and Dan, for putting that together. I know you've put a lot of time and effort into it and these are challenging times, but I really appreciate the comment at the beginning of that. The recognition that the quality organizations, quality anything is always looking for ways to improve and adjust. Our police department has over the year and and I I read into that your commitment to continue to look at things. Let's let's open it up for questions. Now, I want your feedback before we do that too, is that we have another meeting at six thirty. Mike Johnson, how long do you need for your West Side Boulevard design direct presentation?
I I'm flexible, I can be as short as need as I need to be. You have the the copy of the plan, so even if we need to continue this discussion, I don't think there's an urgent rush on it, it's just something we want to get in front of you at some point.
Well, I just want to keep things, other things moving as well because it's it's an interesting read. So let's go fifteen, twenty minutes and see if we can still get that in. If we cannot, I understand that we we have some time and we can bring it back. But let's go ahead. Who who would like to start off with any questions? I have half dozen, but go ahead, Scott.
Mine was on the duty to intercede and it was kind of just a real practical one. That's, that can be challenging for anyone to come up and say, you know, one of their fellow officers did X, Y, or Z or whatever. How often does you get a report like that within the department? Or I guess that's, I'm kind of asking without being, without getting into too many details. I mean, does it happen regularly enough or does it not? Or or do you have confidence that the the guys will actually do that if that's what occurs?
Well, I have confidence that the guys will actually do it because they have done it. We've had, we've had a couple of instances where some some of the guys have been uncomfortable with the with what they've seen or that they've seen, they thought they saw something and and that they they reported to a supervisor. We we of course have, we've investigated and dealt with it. And and it's not, all of our guys understand this policy. And it's, and they all understand it, it's not about making sure that we're following the policy. It's about making sure that we're doing the right thing.
You answered that much better than I asked it. Thanks.
Well, and and I, I, part of that question too is, it's a very, you're right, it's a very difficult thing for them to do. But they all understand from day one, the city and the organization is more important than any one individual. And so we instill that in them from the day they start. The city and the organization is more important than any individual or their partners.
You guys track like complaints that come in? Do we have running statistics on that? And even do we track officers calling out other officers?
Yeah, we have a complaint system and we do track complaints that come in. We of course only, we pay attention to the ones that are sustained. Those 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 sustained complaints are the ones that we actually pay attention to. Complaints come in regularly, we get complaints regularly. I I got one today, you know, the officer was rude to me. You know, and that's something that we can, we can deal with through a conversation or counseling. That's not something that will require a write-up, you know what I mean? If they didn't break any policies, we have, if we have, you know, a policy that wasn't broken, but maybe they were rude or they were short or the person didn't feel like they got good service, that's something that we can, we can actually have a conversation with the officer and just do some quick counseling on versus an actual sustained complaint where they acted inappropriately to the point where they violated the policy. Because they have a a complaint system.
How many times would you say we have actually written up an officer, like in the last calendar year?
I don't know the number.
I don't know, I don't know the number either, but it's 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 quite, I've I've written a few of them myself, so we have.
Yeah, keep in mind they're not, they can be for something as simple as, you know, I require them now to wear masks where feasible, you know, when they're interacting with the public. And if they're not wearing a mask, they'll get a a little ding for that. So it could be something as 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 simple as not wearing a mask and reminder of that. You know, an auto accident where, you know, they're at fault. If it's something where there's, you know, gross mixed conduct or something where we question their ability to do the job or their integrity. There's a lot of write-up with that. They simply get charged or fired. And I can, I can give you, you know, some examples of those, where eventually criminally charged people.
So Tim, I sent you and the mayor that, and I'm forgetting what it's called, where other cities have like a running statistics on their website. What was that called, Tim?
Blot, blotter.
Yeah.
So that there's, we we actually used to submit, when we had Spillman, we submitted to to one of those things. Some of the problems that we have with that is opening, when you have to open up your system to be able to have that that stuff come through. And there's some privacy concerns. There's of course some network security concerns with that, but then there's some privacy concerns with that. So you see the cops on your street and and you go to the the real-time police blotter app or whatever and it kind of shows you that the police are there and that they're there for a domestic disturbance. And it shows a little circle over where that they're at. And so you think it might be Stephen Karen's house, when in fact they're not at Stephen Karen's house. And so the neighborhood starts talking and they say, oh, the cops are Stephen Karen's and the website said that they were there for a domestic and and Stephen Karen were getting a domestic when it really had nothing to do with Stephen Karen. And it was just the nature that the call came through because the the system itself doesn't filter what the actual call is. It just comes in as what it's, as what is generated from from dispatch. A lot of calls are changed once, you know, they come into dispatch one way and then they're changed. And so the neighborhood's talking about a domestic at Stephen Karen's, when a domestic it didn't occur at Stephen Karen's. And so people get offended that we're showing on our, and they think it's our website that that there's a domestic at their house where there never really was. And so there's some issues with with some of those cases. And and since we moved over to, from Spillman to Versa Term, we have not opened up to be part of one of those things yet. One, because the system's not ours and two, because we just, we, it's not something we've addressed yet.
If we do a little research and find out, you know, what cities are doing it well. It seemed like the one coming out of Summit County was really tidy and I know Salt Lake does one as well. Could we put a little time and energy into that?
Yeah, yeah, and I, Tim talked to us about it and it's something that I looked at it and 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 the chief and I talked about it. And we're doing some research to try to come up with with that. It's changed from what it was when we had, when we had Spillman. So it's not, it's not the same one. And so we kind of have to do, we got to dig into it and and look at it.
It's my understanding too, that as we move forward, I don't mean to cut anybody off, that as we get all this information and have all this dialogue, please keep track yourself and we'll try and summarize maybe an agenda of items that we want further information on. Because we may not all be experts on things, but we'll want to get expertise and feedback. So if something kind of gets passed a little bit, keep track and we'll come back, i.e. the blotters things. But Scott, you you had something or Christine or Doug?
I just, when the chief was talking a little bit about some of the above and beyond in the campaign trail, I had the opportunity to meet with many of these people, not even in my district. People that I just happen to know their parents. And I'd like to some of those people too, also to speak about that above and beyond. I I appreciate that, rather than having a situation where you just, like the chief said, you could have just left that such crime or that sad situation and walked away and left the family to to clean up. And that's, that that was, that's very admirable because it's, it's more like a a smaller city that we are to be able to have that, that compassion in a, in a very difficult situation. I appreciate that because I've heard that from many people and it's, it's to be commended.
I have a half dozen questions and and I'm just gonna throw one out now and let someone else go on. But a topic of discussion across the nation, both positive and negative, has been civilian review boards. What's, what's your feelings, Robbie and Dan, with respect to those? Especially with what the legislature did this last session. And I know that even in Salt Lake City, the, the the role has been changing. So what's, what's the feeling from the professionals with respect to civilian review boards?
You want me to go first, Robbie?
Go ahead.
So the, there, there is a state law where there, it's not, you can't have a civilian oversight committee. You can't have civilian review boards. And those civilian review boards, they they kind of go over policy if if the, if the officer acted within policy and they can give their their recommendations to the chief, but it's still up to the chief to to in impose the discipline to make sure that the policy was followed, to to change his policy or or figure out if we need the policy changed or if we need to do some training updates and things like that. It creates, civilian review creates some some issues when it comes to privacy and HIPAA and grandma and different things like that. All things that we of course have to keep in mind when we're discussing cases are things that have gone on as well as litigation. If if there's a, there's going to be litigation against the the department. It's also something that we need to keep in mind when we're going over these things with people, people, you know, on the outside. All all things that Salt Lake City and West Valley who both have review boards kind of grapple with. And I've been watching their process for a while as well as some of the other programs that they're doing. And and I, you know, it's something that that we've talked about, the chief and I have talked about. I just don't know that it's, I just don't know that it's effective in the current form that it it has right now. Chief?
Yeah, and I, and I've, I've talked to those cities who actually have had that. And I'm not sure how effective it is either. You know, there's well-meaning people who who set up those boards. And for the most part, you know, they come back with, you know, positive recommendations and so forth. But you you do run into some problems if, you know, you know, privacy issues. And I think, you know, we've come so far, you know, with body cameras and with with reviews on any uses of force, it creates a layer that I don't know is is necessary. For instance, anytime that we would use, you know, deadly force. I don't know that a review board is is going to be helpful when we have an outside agency filled with professionals who are going to do the investigation. I don't get a touch investigation. Last shooting, I didn't, I didn't touch it at all. Outside agencies do that and then it goes to the district attorney's office and and they review it. And so many of these findings are done by people who have a great deal of experience and education and credentials to actually find those. And and again, we have, you know, different, you know, levels of review with all of our, you know, body cameras. We do do an internal affairs, you know, investigation and we do take input from the public. One thing I didn't get to speak to earlier on the complaint issue. We would, we would like to include more of those. We have a system, just so you know, it's an early warning system. So if I have, because there's, I mean, I could get complaints from an individual over time. And we're human beings, I don't remember everything, every little one that comes through. But you may have a pattern of conduct that starts to emerge. And so our early warning system will show us and let me know that that I should be watching or monitoring this or or there's a problem. That doesn't work though if people go around me and and don't complain to the police department. We have a mechanism in place that anyone who wants to complain can come in, fill out a form, meet with our internal affairs. We do have a very robust internal affairs unit and they're very skilled investigators and they will, they will investigate it and they will observe the officer's rights as they should. And and then they'll, they'll give me a finding and introduce it to the system and that's how we make that system better and make it work. But I hope I answered your question in there.
We, we do really quickly when we're talking about complaints. It is a state law, officer misconduct. It's state fifty-three, six, twenty-one. A chief or a sheriff or administrative officer of a law enforcement agency who's made aware of an allegation against a police officer employed by the agency that involves conduct in violation of the statute must report that to post. So that's something that the chief does. If we have a sustained violation, misconduct violation, he does report to post.
At this time, when we're trying to really strengthen the relationship with the community and build up that trust, maybe we do want to deal with the inconvenience of having a citizen review board. I I know it creates a lot of goodwill, like in West Valley City, they have seven, you know, recurring volunteers that meet. And it kind of gives people, the public, like a buffer someplace that they feel safe being fully heard and listened to. I think that it's, we got to really remember that we all work for the citizens. They're like our board of directors, so to speak, and and they deserve to have a lot of transparency, like resumes of the officers and complaints against the officers and anything that, you know, disciplinary actions that's been taken on the officers. They should be able to see and access and know all that.
Some of that stuff is protected and the, you know, the employees do have rights. There's certain things that are, that are public record and there's certain things that aren't public record. So like I couldn't put an officer's resume, I just couldn't put it out there. And and if an officer's found to to guilty of misconduct, it is public record and it is put out. In fact, it's true, it's it's, it's published in the, in the newspaper that that there, and you can go on the post website and read all of the complaints, the sustained complaints against officers who have found guilty of misconduct. But here, the employees do have rights and some of that stuff I simply can't disclose.
I understand that this will be a topic and I don't mean to spend a lot of time on it, but it'll be one that'll have more discussion going forward. And Tim, if I'm not mistaken, I think the task force with the league, it's it's one of their agenda items as well. And I know as it's the legislature itself. Maybe you could talk about, which is a little bit related, is our hiring practices, how we select officers, the the role of looking for diversity and and gender diversity as well, yeah.
So diversity is really important to us and I think we've done an excellent job with diversity here in the, in the police department. I think the, the, the kind of the rule of thumb for for police departments is that you want your police department to kind of mirror your demographic of your, of your city. And I think we've gone above and beyond that. We have a very diverse police department. And and it's very important for us to have, to have that. In in fact, the chief gave that to me as one of my goals long ago when I got hiring. And 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 so I actively seek out a diverse group of people to come work here. The one thing that I feel like I could do better is finding women. I I don't, I don't feel like we have a lot, a lot of women here at the police department and I'd like to find more. In fact, every female applicant that's come through our, our, our hiring process, that's passed the hiring process, we've hired. But I I think we can do better, I think we could do more. And so when I go out recruiting, I got looking for for officers, I try to And so when I go out recruiting, and I go out looking for, for officers, I try to find women, I try to find people from diverse backgrounds, I try to find bilingual officers to come work here at the police department, and, and you've seen our officers, you, you know, we have, I think we've done an excellent job with that.
Okay, we're, we're running short on time. Would you like to continue with questions, or go to Mike Johnson? And again, Christine, go ahead.
I, I don't have many, many questions, but two. Can you help me, because I, I know there was a slide about SWAT.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I apologize, I, I could use a little bit more education.
That's on my question as well, yeah, good question, yeah.
If you could just help me understand the makeup of the SWAT team? Is it, when we meet, when somebody called, when we call the SWAT, is it all the Cottonwood Heights police, or is it a consortium of a couple from different jurisdictions? Can you just?
So we have a SWAT team, and I have, I have thirteen people assigned to our SWAT team. It's a secondary assignment, it's something that they do, their patrol officers or their detectives first, and then their, their secondary assignment would be SWAT. We are partnered with Murray, so if Murray has something that they need more, more SWAT officers for, they call me and we go and we help them, and, and vice versa. If we have something we need more SWAT officers for, we call Murray and they come and help us. It, it's, it's a secondary assignment, it's very training intensive, and, and, but it's something that we need. It's not something that we use regularly, it's the emergency button that our officers are able to push. We maybe have one, we usually have about one SWAT operation a year, and two on a busy year, here in Cottonwood Heights that we use, and those of course are for very specific things, SWAT's not used regularly, it has to be something that we, it requires additional resources above and beyond what a regular patrol officer has, so the specialized equipment or the specialized training.
Okay, so like of the, so, so when you're on the SWAT team, and maybe I'm not allowed to ask this in a meeting, but.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So on a SWAT team, you, you have different pieces of equipment, I assume, you still have your pistol, you might have a rifle, AR-15 or an M4. What, what's typically the, the makeup, everybody gets one rifle, one pistol, one, I mean, is it, I'm just wondering, because it seems like we have a lot of, like sixty-seven rifles?
Yeah, so every, every.
Trying to understand why, why do we have sixty-seven rifles? And I get why we sell our eighty-three pistols, but, you know, when I think AR-15s and M4s, I think military grade, and so I just get, like, wow, that's a lot of, that's a lot of machinery and armory.
So every, every officer that works for us gets issued an AR-15, and that, it's a, it's a, it's part of our standard officer build-out. AR-15, it's, it's a rifle, of course, it's, 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 it's a, it's a specialized kind of rifle that, that the guys can use, instead of using a shotgun. You, you know, police departments used to issue shotguns, for years and years and years, they issued everybody shotguns, but you can't be as precise with a shotgun. A shotgun has its place, but you could be more precise with, with a rifle. And when officers are shooting at a distance, the handgun is not the proper tool to use at distance. And every, every, every shot that a police officer takes, they are accountable for that shot. There, so we want to be able to have precise equipment for that, so that the guys can account for their rounds. So we issue a rifle to every single one of our, of our, of our officers. Now, the M4 that you're talking about is a, a shorter version of that rifle, when, when the SWAT guys are working, they're working in confined spaces in, in a home or in a residence, or, you know, with a ton of people in, in a, in a small space, and so it's a shorter rifle. If that answers your question.
I think so. You said every officer has an AR-15 issued to them, but I just only see fourteen AR-15s.
I, I don't know, there's a, they're probably just in different, different names, they're, every single officer has an AR-15.
Yeah. Maybe if you just look at that list again and maybe update it, because I see some of the AR-15s are like in the armory. I, I don't know, I just, it's helpful to know, I just, I just, this is the first I've ever had to think about this, since I've been elected, so I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, well, we, I mean, we have forty-two, you know, forty-one officers, and, you know, we have forty-one rifles, and then of course we have backups built in for, if, if a rifle is not functioning, or if a rifle's used, you know, when shooting, just like a handgun that comes out of service, we have to issue them a new one, and so we have backups. And then of course, we are constantly rotating our stock to make sure that we, we stay up to date on, on, you know, that our rifles aren't shot out, that, you know, that we have proper working equipment. But it, I didn't even look at the names on the list, but we do have a rifle for every single officer.
The rifle could be an AR-15 or an M4, I mean, it doesn't have to be the AR-15 specifically.
Yes, yes.
Of that rifle category.
Yes.
Got it, thanks.
But it, it would look the same to you, if you were just looking at it, it would look the same. Now, you'll also see like several shotguns on there, but they're not, some of the shotguns are designated as non-lethal, so they only shoot the beanbag rounds, so you can't use them for both, because you have to be clearly distinguished, and they're actually different colors, so we don't make a mistake, and think we're shooting a beanbag, you know, at someone when it's actually, you know, a lethal round. There are other shotguns that do take off hinges on doors, so, and then there are other weapons in there that look and sound like the same rifles you're referring to, only they're parade rifles and they're chromed, and they sit in the armory, and we only use them for flag presentations as well.
Hey Dan, staying on the same topic of SWAT, you mentioned that there were extra days, I think it was like three extra days per month required for training?
Two extra days.
Two extra days per month? So we have thirteen detectives training two extra days every month, so twenty-six full, full-paid work salary days per month in order to sustain our SWAT capacity, right?
No, so it's, well, they're not, they're officers, not just, they're a mixture of detectives and officers in there, and so it's, it's sixteen extra hours a month for those thirteen people to do that, but it's not, we're not paying them, it's, it's actually, we schedule adjusted out. It's not an overtime thing that they're being paid extra to do it, that they get schedule adjusted out, it's just more training for them.
That's thirty-eight hours of their time, of officer time. And is, are, are there any national standards that justify, like what size of a city or level of crime that justify having a SWAT?
That is the national standard. What, 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 what that sixteen hours is, is what is laid out on the national standard of what you have to do to be able to, to keep a, and it's not a full-time SWAT team, it's a part-time SWAT team.
Right, right. But I'm, I'm not saying, I'm moving past the training now, just to, like justifying the additional cost of having a SWAT, training for a SWAT, and arming a SWAT. Do we, as a little east side community of thirty-six thousand, meet the national suggested?
Yes, yes we do. And, and we do need them, we do use them. They, they have their purpose, and it's, it's, you almost have to look at it like insurance, when you need those guys for the specialized stuff that they do, you absolutely need them. It, it's not something that, it's, it's a high liability thing that, that someone else want to come in and do for you regularly, because of the liability, they want you to be, to, to, to do, be able to do it. I mean, of course they'll come in and help you, and we will help, we've helped all sorts of different SWAT teams in this valley. But it, it's, it's, it's like having insurance.
With that question.
About once a year?
How many, I'm sorry, but if you, if you say it's a standard, does, does every city within the valley have a SWAT team?
Yes.
Okay, that, yeah. Sorry, Chris, or Talia, I cut you off, go ahead.
Oh, you were saying we use them about once a year, do we use SWAT every time we do a no-knock entry?
So a no-knock entry, like a no-knock search warrant, we don't do a lot of no-knock search warrants, we do have no-knock search warrants, and if it's a no-knock search warrant, it's up to, it's up to me to be able to figure out if that's something that we're going to use the SWAT team for or not. We have gotten really good recently on if we have a no-knock search warrant, not executing that no-knock search warrant, where typically where you see, you know, like on the movies where they bust in the door and they go in and running. We've come up with other unique ways to, to be able to execute that warrant without, you know, as safe as possible.
How recently did we change our protocol?
We've been doing that for a while, we've been doing that for, for years now. I mean, I'm, it's not, we, like, we executed a no-knock search warrant, the traditional no-knock search warrant, earlier this year, we did it in March, we executed a no-knock search warrant. It, it was, it was the safest way to do it, and we did it, and that got us a, 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 a major drug ring off of our streets.
Go ahead, Scott, maybe last question.
Those should be rare, rarely used, I'm obviously, but there, I, I certainly see a need for officer safety, but at the same time, they should be very judicial, they, and the judges will be quite, I would stringent on that, I would expect.
Yeah, there's a standard that, that you have to meet to be able to get a no-knock search warrant from the judges, anyway, I mean, what, what they require for a no-knock search warrant, you have to be able to meet, and then it comes to, every warrant comes to my desk, and I got to go through that warrant, and I got to see if it meets, if it meets the standard for us for a no-knock search warrant, not just what the judge has approved, but for our police department to execute a no-knock search warrant, it's got to meet our standard, and, and, and that's something that, you know, that weighs heavy on me to be able to authorize a no-knock search warrant.
Okay, Christine, last question, and before she asks her question, Mike, my apologies to you, I knew you were warned this may happen, so we're going to get to the Wasatch Boulevard Plan in, in our next meeting. Christine will be final questions, and then I, I promise everyone that we'll continue this discussion and get in more detail on a few things. I know I've got three or four left, but again, appreciate Dan and Robbie's efforts to do this, but it's, it's educational right now, and then we'll determine how we want to use this education to move forward. But Christine, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm here. I, I think Chief Russo, at one point in your presentation, towards the end there, you, you made a statement that I always use the phrase, it takes a village, like we're all working together, right, for a better community, and it, it reminded me that when we were talking about the, the solve the problem slogan that we have, that, that perhaps we could all, if, if there was enough interest, we could add two words to that slogan, and that's, together we solve the problem. You had referenced a person in my district, referred to him as Jesus, and I specifically recall that, what happened there, because myself and a neighbor who's a PhD psychologist were involved, and I think feeding Tim, city manager Tim Tingi, some information about that, and how to solve that problem, and it just sort of was interesting how you used that example, and I recalled myself and that constituent being in the background trying to, to help out, and it, it just, just makes me think that perhaps if, if people don't like protect and serve, then people may not like solve the problem, but just adding together we solve the problem, it seems much more inclusive to me, and I don't know that it would cost much to add that to the theme, but I just wanted to bring that up more of just a way to end my talking points for this evening, so thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, and I think that'll be, the messaging, we'll want to talk more about messaging and coming back. Again, thank you everyone for your patience. We need to adjourn our work session and move to.
May I just, so on, we, we can have more conversation on this, I think we'll need to talk about the, the timing on that when we, when we come back. I know, I know that on the next agenda, we have a lot of different things on the work session as well, so I just want to, I want to make sure we understand, we'll have these conversations, are you expecting it to be at the very next meeting, because we're pretty packed? That's my question.
Well, my expectation is that we don't want to lose momentum, so I think we'll, I would propose that we have it on our next meeting as well, even if it's abbreviated, to identify some topics or issues we're going to pursue. But I'll work with Tim on summarizing this discussion, then as council members, you can give us some feedback, but we'll be a little bit flexible, but we'll want to keep some things going. And I know I've got two or four questions left myself that I'd like to address, but we, we recognize we need to keep the city operating and keep things moving, so we will, we'll keep things balanced, but I think that we'll want to continue the next couple of meetings as well, but we'll try and not let it be the, the only focus as we did tonight and last meeting, if that's all right. Different thoughts?
No, I think that's good. You're looking for a motion to adjourn our work session and go to the CDRA meeting?
Correct, thank you.
I'll make.
Okay, it was a motion, it's been motioned by Councilor Bracken, and second by Councilor Bruce, all in favor can say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll adjourn and we'll convene in about two, two minutes, thank you.